All right, it looks like it's six fifteen, so I call this meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. And the first item on our, oh, I noted attendance, all, all seven members are in attendance. The first item on our agenda is the tax anticipation note, there are two attachments to board book. So now is the time where the board can discuss the information in those attachments, ask questions to staff. I'll open it up now.
Uh, I've got questions if you guys are ready for them. So this is probably a Kim, Kim, this is a question. Well, I'm gonna play like, okay, the, we pass it, okay, let's just say that's what the board decides. And we'll find out shortly on that. I'm trying to understand some of the previous meetings that we had about how long we anticipate the loan or the money on the books, so to speak, to be on, because I'm trying to understand, because when it was originally anticipated, it was like, oh, the money's only gonna be on our books for a short amount of time. And then with that first payment, we'll just pay it right off. So my question is with the amount of debt that we have now and the cuts that we're making, are we still going with that same plan? Because there's nothing on here about how exactly we're paying the software, we're gonna just break it into payments? Or are we still planning on doing like a lump sum with that first, assuming state payment in July? That's my question.
Perfect, excellent question. I apologize for any prior misunderstanding on that. The note is a fixed duration note, so the funds are provided June fourth and they are in our possession until the date of maturity of December thirty one, twenty twenty four. So the great part is, and possibly what, what my miscommunication before might have been is that the funds will remain in our possession earning interest in our highest earning interest account and interest bearing account. So those funds will be working for us until the month of October as shown on the cash flow analysis where some of those funds will need to be temporarily used between October payroll and the receipt of property taxes in November.
So, so what you're saying, Kim, is that amount, the, the the figures we see on there are taking all that into consideration as far as the interest will gain on the plus side?
Correct. Page one of the tax cash flow analysis, the reason they are showing an interest expense of ninety two thousand is that the, is that is the amount that they anticipate will, would be paid based on an assumed interest rate of four point one five during that six months duration? And then the in-interest earnings of a hundred and three thousand as shown is based on that cash flow analysis, how much of the maximum note amount, and that would be if we borrow that maximum note amount, how much of that note amount will be sitting in a interest earning account currently at five point two percent for the duration of that same six month period?
Okay, okay, so.
And Kim, can you go ahead and explain what that, what that account is, so for people who don't, may not know what the, what, where that goes?
Absolutely. So the resolution actually goes into some detail about that there will be actually a specific account that is set up for this, but the account would be an interest bearing account. We do have a couple of options approved by the state, the most common is the local government investment pool, LGIP. So when you see financial statements moving forward and you see an LGIP account, that is the local government investment pool and it definitely holds a lot of Oregon government funds.
Right. And it's generally gonna be the highest, isn't it? I mean, that's what I've found in my past connections to any of this.
Yeah. Generally, it is the highest. I will tell you that we were very fortunate to get in on a money market opportunity with another bank that is approved by the state. We actually have another money market and it, uh, its rate is guaranteed at a quarter point above LGIP. So we are maximizing our interest earnings right now and yeah, definitely, uh, every penny is helping, so.
I think, Kim, if I'm looking at this correctly, and I may not be, but at that, that bottom line, it talked about like overall costs, once taking in the interest expense, our estimated earnings off the investment and then the issuance costs. So the actual cost that we will have to pay, is that sixty thousand five seventy five, is that accurate?
That is the projection, yes, based on the assumed interest borrowing rate and interest earning rate.
Okay. Um, and then I guess kind of fault question, I think, just for transparency. Uh, when we first suggested this, you know, a couple of weeks back, you know, in conversation with community members, there was concern about borrowing, obviously against, and our financial situation has has changed, I just wanna walk this through. If, if we did not pass this, what does that look like? Like, let's say we decide for whatever reason not to move forward with the TAN, what is that, what does that look like?
So what that looks like as shown on page three of the cash flow analysis, the very bottom line is that in June, based on our current anticipated expenditures, our cash balance would be negative one point three million dollars, meaning we would be short to meet our anticipated obligations in June of one point three million dollars. Obviously, the majority of our obligations are payroll. Um, we definitely are asking for the board to help us make sure we meet that, and that is why the budget reduction proposal from OASBO is so significant for next year.
Okay, then, sorry, just one fault kind of comment. So this is, uh, one critical piece to an overall strategy to try and meet our budget deficit for this current year, is that accurate?
Current and, and next year as well, correct, correct.
And then that's the part that I wanted to comment on, um, because I, I think that the goal here is to not to have to do a TAN if we have to in future, so that we can avoid that, you know, that the, the net cost. Um, and so that is something that I'm assuming that people are in favor of, but I don't know, so um, I think that that's something, you know, that we should be aware of is that, that cost. Because we don't want to have to push this again, we don't want, I want to be in this position again for twenty five, twenty six.
Correct, and right before Owen's question, um, it's important to remember that, so not, many years ago, many districts would actually apply for a TAN, this is before we used to get equal payments throughout the year. It's why that the, the, the state changed to a double payment in July, because people without a healthy enough ending fund balance never had enough cash flow to get through to their, um, tax collection in uh, November. So TAN, the TAN process was actually a relatively common thing. That's why the state eventually changed to a double payment in July to, to have fewer districts have to do this, was a very common thing to do, so especially if your, um, fund balance was not large enough, uh, in the lean years especially. So that's, you know, we don't wanna do, we don't wanna turn this into a thing that we do often. Um, and it's far less often now, the double payment, but the, our issue is not just getting through the, the one point three at the end of this year, but it's getting us all the way to November when the property tax parts receipts come in, and that's, that's actually, this is that bridge to that part, so while it gets paid off at the same time, we still have to be able to have cash on hand to be able to, to pay, to pay out to our employees.
Owen, I'm sorry if I went ahead of you, I couldn't see your hand.
No problem, I'm sorry my video is not cooperating. Um, I'm wondering if on the cash flow analysis, if, if and to what degree you've factored in incremental expected expenditure cuts and savings.
So the cash flow analysis was prepared to show, um, it did not, I and I apologize, Jackie was unable to be here tonight, my, my understanding is, um, if you were to compare the twenty three, twenty four monthly expenditures, which is the lower blue boxes, they are definitely, uh, less per month than our twenty three, twenty four per month. So this is with the proposed reductions um, to our staffing, I don't believe, um, this is quite the full eight point eight, um, you know, that is being suggested. Um, if, if you look at the differences year over year, let's, um, if we were to pick, say, expenditures in uh, the, the month of, of November in twenty three, twenty four of three point three million, and then we look at November of twenty four, twenty five, dropping to two point eight million. Um, you know, that, I guess that, that actually is right about our twelve percent, um, that we're looking to, to reduce, so it, it is, it does require us to make these significant changes, um, for, in next year.
Kim, twelve, that's the first time I've heard that number.
Sorry.
We, what's that twelve percent you're talking about?
Yeah, what, what that is, is a extremely just very, uh, rough number of eight point eight million in cuts across what this year was approximately a seventy nine million dollar budget. So that's across the entire budget, so there's going to be different variables based on the fund source, restricted revenues versus general fund, but.
So just so I'm clear, and I don't think it really matters much, but it, so I understand this whole process, we're gonna be making monthly payments? Or how, how are we paying this back?
It is a one lump sum payment of the, uh, TAN amount that is approved tonight, plus the accrued interest at the rate that is locked in at the time of sale of the note.
And that's in December, correct?
December thirty one. So the goal, of course, is to have as much of that cash invested as long as possible throughout this period to maximize interest earnings.
And decrease the net cost overall.
Decrease net cost, yes.
Now, just so I understand, the, this loan, that reflects what we need if we pull off cutting our one point two from the year that we're in the middle of trying to accomplish uh, with our unions and everything, is, is that correct? So we, we make those, we make, if those come to fruitation, then that we get those, then this is the amount we need. If, if worst case scenario, something goes awry with all that, uh, I guess, what happens then?
So that is exactly why we brought in multiple people to do parallel analysis of this, to do conservative parallel analysis of, of what the revenue is going to be between now and December. Um, because making sure you, you hit those marks is absolutely critical to being able to repay the loan. Now, property taxes in November come in, in the millions and millions in November, so the cash flow to repay a loan in December would not be the concern. As Jackie mentioned in the OASBO presentation, she cannot without certainty say that you will unequivocally not have a potential cash flow concern at the end of twenty four, twenty five. That is part of the analysis of, let's achieve the one point two billion dollar reduction this year, achieve a balanced, uh, budget for next year with the cuts that we're at, and, uh, with the goal of being completely self-sufficient next year, but again, we, that analysis is still in the works.
Okay, and so, so as far as everybody like her and everything is concerned, this is the least we can get by with, no way I'm saying, and the reason I'm saying that, because my understanding of it is, whatever we borrow obviously has to come out of next year's budget, so then it exasperates what our cuts are for next year, which is at eight point eight, I guess what I'm getting at is there a smaller number on this that works, but makes it so that eight point eight is an eight point eight, it would be less. But what I'm hearing, it sounds like maybe that would be possible, but at the same token, we're drastically increasing our chances of needing a TAN again at the end of next year if we did that. Am I close?
So yes, there's, um, while we may not have a four million dollar single month or three point eight million dollar, let me go back, single month cash flow concern, the analysis by Piper Sandler due to issuance costs, interest earnings, those sorts of pieces, uh, would be that borrowing this maximum amount would definitely be the, the recommendation and would help prepare us as best as possible to make those reductions early in our twenty four, twenty five school year to put us on track as close as possible to, to not having a cash flow concern in essentially the June twenty twenty five area. But again, that's, that's, it's a significant, uh, hill in front of us to build that budget next year with these reductions.
And Kim, the eight point eight million dollar reduction next year, it encompasses the payback of the TAN as well, correct?
One hundred percent, one hundred percent. It is really a by, let's call this a three point eight million of that eight point eight, it is a five million dollar reduction in costs. We will see a three point eight million revenue increase this year, which will actually appear that our ending fund balance for, um, twenty three, twenty four, I apologize, I've been in three years all day today, uh, twenty three, twenty four, uh, to appear healthier than, uh, than projected, yes.
But then, in expense in December when we pay it back.
It comes in and it goes right back in, so.
And then, and then we were talking, or the Dr. Joe, we were talking about how that eight point eight also encompasses a million dollars of reserves target for the end of twenty four, twenty five school year, correct?
That is also correct, yes. That gives you the beginning of an ending fund balance. While small, it does provide some reserve to begin that building back.
Okay, just wanna make sure I had all the numbers right.
Right, because all of the cash we have on hand, we're spending through everything to zero, so that's why this begins that step. So the eight point eight encompasses paying back this three point eight, it also encompasses a million in reserves, um, targeted reserves, maybe clear about that, and then um, the rest of that about just uh, doing some right sizing and some living within the means that we have set out.
Okay, earlier today, you mentioned to us about some numbers from a reconciliation, has anything come from prutation on any of that?
No, not yet. So there, um, as was talked about in the, uh, board meeting, uh, which seems like a lifetime ago, it might have been Monday night or Tuesday night. Um, we, uh, discussed, and there was a little bit of consternation just with the fact that we have to make, uh, our best guess and they're based on estimates. And so when they reconcile, and that's what we're going through now, is reconciliation of the twenty two, twenty three school year, so we live in three budgets at all times, we're reconciling last year, living in this year, preparing for next year. Uh, and so that reconciliation, um, appears to be in the positive. Uh, and remember also though, that we do have high cost disability that, that there had been revenues planned on that will eat away at some of that. The bright spot in that, however, is that we're most likely not taking a loss, in fact, we're, we're very likely to be in the positive of the balance between the high cost disability change, remember that we talked about being thirty six on the cents on the dollar, it may be a little bit higher than that, but it definitely does not add to our eight point eight problem or one point two. Um, and it may provide a little bit of relief, so uh, we haven't gotten final confirmation because we're still waiting on the high cost disability to know what our balance is. Um, but it is, uh, I will say it's, it was a needed bright spot that we weren't going to have to reconcile additional funds to short, to, to fix twenty two, twenty three. And this happens every year, right? So in school budgeting, the prior year gets reconciled by the Department of Ed, they tell you if you, if they gave you too much or not enough, and that happens across the state, so um, the bright spot is that we are not gonna be in the negative between those two large funds, the high cost disability and the reconciliation of the state school fund.
Well, I'm grateful, you know, for you guys answering the questions and helping us understand the process a bit more, but it's during this discussion time for me, it's clear that we only have really one choice due to the obligations that we have to make sure that people can pay their bills. The only way that I see that's possible is through this program and to get us forward. Saying no to this means people don't get paid, can't pay, get food on the table, um, puts us in a more dire situation, so it makes no sense to, to shoot this thing down.
I guess I, I totally agree, Josh, and for me, the other piece is, uh, planning to not get uh, be faced with the same situation at the end of next year and to need another TAN, and so I feel confident with the, um, recommendations from OASBO and, um, you know, just the, the, the planning, it's gonna be, you know, the, the, the eight point eight is gonna be, is gonna be tough, but, um, that's gonna help prevent us from having to go to the TAN again the following school year.
Yeah, and then Chair Trader, we've got, uh, I think, um, Derek has a question.
Oh, thank you, Derek.
Yep.
Yeah, I can't.
It's hard to see on your phone.
Everybody, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, just one final question, and I think we discussed, I just wanna confirm this, once we send this through, it'll be a fixed interest rate, correct?
It is fixed at the time of the sale of the note, and that is anticipated to be, uh, at the, the end of May. So we do not, unfortunately, we will not know that rate until the note is sold. The four point one five projection on the TAN analysis includes, as noted in the footnote, a one half of one percent cushion on it already, so the hope would be that we we would, I would love to see it come in just a, a little, a little hair lower, so.
But once we get that point in May, from there on, it would be fixed until it matures.
Absolutely, fixed note, fixed interest.
Thank you.
Tom, I see your hand raised.
Yeah, yeah, uh, just wanna confirm how I, how I we borrowed the, or the three point eight, um, so we don't have the shortfall at the end of the year, that will, will be carrying over a three, that create a basically a three million dollar or so carryover or ending fund balance, we'll carry that over. And so then we'll take about three mil, well, we'll have that carried over, so we're only having to cut, I think, I heard five million dollars out of the budget, and then we'll eat into some of that carryover, is that correct?
So I'd like to, um, kinda take, take each of those pieces. So per the OASBO presentation with no changes, our general fund would end approximately four million dollars negative. A three point eight million dollar TAN would still have a small negative fund balance, which is why the one point two million dollar reduction before six thirty was proposed. So trying to avoid a four million dollar negative ending fund balance through these reductions, uh, authorizing the TAN to ensure cash flow, which then would should it, should the four million dollar ending fund balance be as projected, should the one point two million dollar in cuts happen, you get to a negative two point eight million dollar ending fund balance, you bring in three point eight of a TAN, you have a one million dollar positive ending fund balance based on those rough projections, obviously.
Okay, it just, so and I, that was cut, that, we're cutting twelve percent off the next year's budget, roughly?
Twenty four, twenty five budget of eight point eight million dollar reduction would be approximately twelve percent across all funds.
Okay, got it, okay. Thank you.
If I'm not calling on you and your hands raised, just speak up.
Chair Trader, I'm not seeing any other hands at this moment.
Thank you. Okay, are we ready then to make a motion for the resolution? Um, I, I just wanna check in with Kim and Joe. Um, would the resolution be something like, I just, I, I moved to approve resolution number four eleven, twenty twenty four? Is that good enough?
It is.
All right, okay, I'm ready.
I so moved, uh, adopt a resolution, whatever the numbers was, she just said, I don't have it.
It's, it's today's date.
Okay, okay, uh, and four eleven, two thousand twenty four.
Okay. She's been moved in seconded to approve resolution number four eleven, twenty twenty four, any further discussion?
I think the only thing I'll add, and I think Josh touched on this, um, I wish we weren't in this spot, um, but I just don't see an alternative to accomplish what we need to accomplish.
Agree, and I think that this is the the only step that we can take and, and just we know that there's a lot of behind the scenes work happening right now with both of our unions, um, in order to help make this work, and we would not be able to make this work without the, uh, collaboration with, with both unions, and, and I'm super grateful um, for the work that's gone on today and will continue to go on, so thank you staff, thank you, um, unions for collaborating around this, um, it, it's super, uh, it's super helpful, so thank you very much.
I, uh, I wanna tag in on that, that all our own staff from our district, every last employee in the district is affected by this. A lot are doing a lot to make something sense out of this that we can go forward and helping to as any way they possibly can and are offering that help and everything. And also to, uh, the crew from ESD and, and all the other associations who help us out too, it's taken an army to do this. And we, it's all greatly appreciated.
In a very short timeframe as well, I think I wanna, I wanna underline that because things have had to move super quickly, people are working into the night, um, to make all of this happen and, um, yeah, I, I just wanna make sure everybody knows that their work is appreciated, uh, profoundly from, from my point of view anyway, and I'm assuming that everybody else is as well. All right, are we ready to vote then? Debbie, can you call the vote?
Phil.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Owen.
Yes.
Derek.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Erin.
Yes.
Josh.
Yes.
All in favor?
Um, I'm just gonna take some time to do a good of the order. Um, Dr. Murlock is recommending that the board consider a finance committee consisting of two or three board members that meet regularly to do a deep dive, um, into the financials. Um, I think many of you may know that, um, his first superintendency, uh, was, uh, walking into a district that had a, a very similar uh, financial profile to Silver Falls, and so he has been through this before and, um, is, so it's a real, we, we are very fortunate to have his, um, expertise and, and perspective, and so um, I just want us to be thinking about that because that's probably gonna appear on a future agenda.
Just to add to that, Jennifer, our current policy does not allow for standing committees, so I've reaching out to OSBA to get a, they have several sample copies of, uh, board committee policies and to, uh, so probably at next month's or next week, the April twenty second board meeting, we'll be looking at a policy to, uh, to change that so that we can have a standing committee, so that we can have a, a, a standing budget committee.
And that was, um, CBE, am I right, Erin? Is, okay. B.
BCE.
So it, board members, if you're interested in looking at what's currently on the books, um, it's BCE. Um, it says that we can't have standing committees, um, and we would probably wanna consider changing that so that we could have a standing committee, um, so all of that is, is, will, will, there'll be more to consider and we will, um, have that on an upcoming agenda.
Yeah. And we, Chair Trader, we can also bring that policy forward, you can consider it, if, uh, you like it as written, you can go ahead and make those changes in one meeting. So we can talk about what that process would look like, the board can discuss, um, their interest in doing that, but it is possible to do the policy and then, and then set those up if you'd like. So that's, that's something that, that. So that's, that's something that that the board can discuss at our next regular meeting.
Yeah, good.
So I have a question then, real quick. What's the, I know we talked about probably many more meetings happening over next couple of months, which is understandable. This, I think we pushed back the budget committee. I think we did that at the last meeting. I don't know if we did that officially or not. Um, and then so with, when is this finance committee? I mean, I would, it would appear that this is pretty urgent. Um, when, when, when are you wanting to see this committee take place, Dr. Morlock? Like, within a month or what's your timeline?
Sure. Well, this is both a short and a long-term thing. Um, I I, as we spoke earlier today, um, with Chair and Vice Chair. Uh, this is something that I'm recommending that you have that goes on into the future, that this becomes a regular standing committee. Um, I think one of the the difficulties and you, the questions you've asked tonight are are all good questions, and it's really about learning to live within three budgets. School finance is just different, and so it provides an opportunity for a subset of the board to gain more expertise. To ask all those deep questions, to find out some of those things. So when we come to a public board meeting, you already have some of that information and you, you know. You're able to to um, explain it more. So in the long term, I'm expecting, I'm expecting, it's up to you. But I would suggest that you just, you have a monthly meeting like we have with our Chair and Vice Chair, then you would also have a separate committee, and that finance committee. Before we get to the public board meeting, reviews all of the the uh, things in the budget, and that way you can sign, see where we are. Um, in the other longer term, we uh, or in the shorter terms, sorry, um, we can set it up for this next meeting, so you have an official committee. And then we can go ahead and uh, convene a meeting right off the bat, so we can find a time that works for everyone. And uh, we can meet and talk and kinda show. Everybody where you are, uh, you know, I'll, my emails that are twelve pages long probably would be too, you know, hard to go through and. Uh, so it's it's easier to be able to do them either in person or in Zoom, uh, but to go through those things and and just get an idea of. Uh, as we get closer to the budget committee, uh, it would be helpful to have additional board members know more about those. Uh, about how we're building it, how we're putting it together, where the changes are in our expenditures for next year. Um, and you know, where the revenues come in and all that stuff. So I would expect we could get that going in a couple of weeks. Um, right now, to be honest with you, we are um, working really hard. As Chair Trigger said earlier, we're working hard with our associations and our. Uh, leadership team to figure out what uh, an eight point eight um, differential between budget years looks like. So we're. We're really uh, trying to do a lot of work on that, but I think in that two-week, three-week timeframe, we would have a really good idea about where we are and. Uh, we could spend some time going through that stuff.
Just a.
And just.
Just a quick piggyback on that. So Josh, one thing is I'll be asking Debbie to email the board tomorrow to start getting those May dates. So your availability that, having those really helps because we have your, a spreadsheet and we know what your availability is. So she'll be reaching out to you to schedule those. And I also think for the next superintendent, and after getting a standing committee, I would also want to know his or her idea on having. Community budget meetings in preparation to uh, the budget committee process. So something that takes place maybe January through April in preparation for the May process. So those conversations are already out in the community about. What the district is doing, thinking and reviewing. So I think that would be another thing for uh. Leaning on the the next superintendent and the board's interest in doing something like that.
Good idea.
Sounds good, Dan. Okay, then if if we don't have any other housekeeping good of the order, I am going to say meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.